I'm not hearing her as well.
Try again. I've muted some of the mics that were inadvertently not muted. Any better? Is that any better, Commissioner Rotman?
Can he slide down to Commissioner Miller's position?
We're having, any better, Commissioner Rotman? Okay, so that's better on that end, and we need if IT in the control room could bring the clicker in for the presentations. There we go. All right, we've had quite a start, Madam Vice Chair, but I think we can continue.
Thank you. Tonight's, we're beginning with a study session at 5:30 PM. We're scheduled to move into our regular session at 6 o'clock PM. However, we will roll from one into the other if it runs a little bit long on the study session. Now is the time for public comment on the study session. You will have two opportunities to speak under pump-up comments. The first is for the study session. I would encourage people who have things that they would like to say about the proposed plan development we will be reviewing to speak now. Otherwise, you can speak at the second session at the beginning of our regular planning commission meeting. If however, you're here, you want to speak for something in the regular session, and you're unable to stay that long, please go ahead and come forward at this time. Do we have any members of the public who would wish to speak on the proposed planning?
We do. Our first speaker will be Catherine Myler, followed by the applicant.
And I live at 2311 North Indian Canyon Drive. I'm the owner of the Grace Miller House, built in 1937, and one of only two Richard Neutra-designed houses in Palm Springs, the other one being the famous Kaufman House on Vistecino. My house is both a Class 1 historic site and is on the National Register of Historic Houses. I feel very strongly that the new project, as submitted here tonight, will drastically and negatively impact this important historic resource, and I would ask you to particularly consider the eastern portion of the project and its setbacks in relation to my property. Currently, I'm bordered by a motel under construction to the north and a two-story apartment building that overlooks my garden to the south, both with six-foot setbacks. To the east is North Indian Canyon Drive, a major thoroughfare where traffic will exponentially increase as a result of this project. The project, as submitted, shows a row of swimming pools within a mere few feet of my rear wall, and two-story houses beyond, currently set back 25 feet, with a height somewhere between 26 to 28 feet. It isn't clear to me if the land will be graded to raise the current level, as many planned developments are, so it could end up being higher. I would implore the planning commission tonight to consider a more appropriate further setback and possibly height restrictions, so as not to subject this very famous little house to further negative impact. Thank you.
If you are online and wish to speak to this item, please raise your hand. Madam Vice Chair, it's at your discretion whether you would like the applicant to speak now or following staff's presentation. I think often we would want to take their comments.
May we please have the staff presentation first?
Sure, so if you're okay with that. I see no other public comments on this matter unless anyone else wishes to speak at this time. So we'll do a staff presentation now. If we could get the presentation up on the screen, control room?
While we're getting ready, I'll go ahead and announce the full name of the study session. This is a discussion item, a request by GHA Investments LLC for a pre-application for the development of a 104-unit residential project consisting of 31 detached, single-family residences, 53 townhomes, and 20 affordable apartments on a vacant 8.23-acre site located at the southwest corner of North Indian Canyon Drive and East Racket Club Road, Zone PD 113A and R2, case pre-app 2025-5. And this item is one on which we will not make any decisions this evening. It's for the purpose of study and to give input and comments to the developer.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the planning commission. So, as stated by the chair, this is a pre-application. So, what that simply means is that it is not a formal application. This is part of a process that the code requires, that when a plan development district application is intended to be submitted, they go through a process. One of those processes is for you to have a preview of the application through this process. But first, let me just give you a little background of the site, right? So, as the Madam Chair stated, it is an 8.23-acre site, and the proposal is for a mix of residential development. So those development, we total 104 units, and the breakdown is as follows. Number one, it will contain 53 townhome units in duplexes and triplexes. And it will have 31 detached, single-family residential units, and then 20 apartment units. These are intended to be affordable units, and they will be in two stories, again, for a total of 104 units. The overall density will be 12.6, and the development will include an amenity center that will include a pool pavilion, spa, and seating areas. So, again, as I mentioned earlier, the PDD process is as required by Section 94.03, subsection C-2C of the zoning ordinance. Now, one of the requirements is that, before we get to this stage, that the applicant hold an outreach meeting. That meeting was held on September 17, and a staff report generated from that meeting is part of your materials. So tonight, we have a scoping meeting. Again, there will be no formal decisions made in pre-applications meeting. It is an opportunity for the commission to offer comments and directions to the applicant, so that those comments could be incorporated into the formal application when submitted. Now, particular to this application, here are some of the issues, right, that are highlighted in your staff report. Number one, the project site consists of various, up to 10 smaller parcels that the applicant has acquired in order to bring forth this project. The general plan designation of the site is MDR, that is medium-density residential, has a density of 15.1 to 30 units to the acre. And then the zoning designation is, I got it wrong? Okay, I'm sorry. All right. So, the zoning designation is R2. But as currently proposed, right, I mentioned earlier that there will be single-family residential development. However, R2 does allow single-family residential with a different development standard. The development standard would be R1A. But again, because this is going to be a plan development district application, the applicant or the project will be proposing their own development standards that we will talk about as I go on. So, the proposed single-family residential unit will have a lot sizes of 2,850 square foot. And this does not comply with the R1A standard that the zoning requires in R2. Again, that's one of the reasons why it is going to be a PDD. And finally, the applicant at this point is proposing a gated community. However, again, the general plan and the zoning code does not allow that. However, the zoning code also give that discretion to the planning commission to make a decision whether to allow the gate or not.
And just to correct the record, the site is designated medium-density residential, MDR, which allows a density range of 6.1 to 15 dwelling units per acre.
Thank you, Chris. So, this current site is just showing the area of the site and the pictures of the existing condition of the area. So, this is the, an aerial, and these are the conditions. As you can see, it is vacant. However, there was about many years ago, about 25 to 30 years ago, there were some structures on the site, but they have all, they have since been leveled. This, since I've been here, since I've been with the department, this will be the third major item that has been brought before the planning commission. The other two entitlements were never, didn't come to fruition, and that's why the site is still remaining undeveloped. So this is a continuation of the site and some of the existing uses in the area. So, this is a site plan as proposed. So as I mentioned earlier, it will consist of single-family residential, and then townhomes, duplexes and triplexes. And the apartment is proposed to be on this section of the site. This is just a call-out of the site plan and the lot sizes as being proposed and the floor plans. This is just a rendering of how the entrance is, entrance to the development is being proposed. And here are the very conceptual renderings of the single-family as proposed. It will be two stories in height. And here is an elevation of the triplex townhome. And here, to the top, on the top, is the apartment complex, and on the bottom is the pool pavilion at the recreation center. So going back to the site plan, in the middle of the development is where the recreation center, that will consist of pool, seating area, barbecue area, and the pavilion pool that I just showed earlier. That's where it will be located. The main entrance into the development will be taken from Racket Club. A second point of access, which is for exit only, is via Olivera. And the internal circulation is as follows, all the driveways. And there are several pedestrian travel paths leading into the development from all the corners and all the points. So, moving forward, these are conceptual, against some conceptual renderings of the structures, the single-family, and then the duplexes and triplexes. So again, to reemphasize on this, because this is part of, part of the discussion that you will be having, is number one, the general plan designation, the zoning, and the proposed development standards from the applicant. So again, the site is designated MDR, that allows 6.1 to 15 units to the dwelling acre. Again, it is Zone R2, which allows multifamily development and single-family residential development with R1A development standards. As proposed, though, the single-family residential lots will, are proposed at 2,850 square foot per lot. Again, there will be a total of 104 units at a density of 12.6 units to the acre. So this is where the deviations from the code arises. So, this is also provided in your staff report. Now, to the left, on the left column here, are the standards, and next is are the required, and to the right, are the provided or the proposed, right? And here, it tells the ones that are conforming to the code and the ones that are not. So for instance, we start with the lot sizes. Minimum lot sizes in R2 area is 20,000 square foot. The applicant is providing 8.23 acres, which complies. The same thing with the width and then the depth. So, on the minimum setback, there is one of the setback required that doesn't meet the code, that is on the frontage along Racket Club. The code requires 30 feet. The applicant is proposing 20 feet, which does not comply at this point. However, with plan development district application, that if approved, that will be in compliance. So the same thing goes with building separation. In R2, 15 feet is required, but the applicant is providing, proposing 10 feet. That also is not in compliance. And then, and that's with the, with the multifamily development. And then with the single-family residential, again, because the code says that single-family residences are allowed in R2 zones, however, with the R1A development standard. So, in that case, 20,000 square foot is the minimum required in R1A. However, the applicant is providing, is proposing 2,850 square foot. That could become compliant with the PDD. Now, that in itself is not rare in the city, so there are two developments that come to mind. Number one is the Esina development, where the minimum lot size is 2,500 square foot. And that is, is one of our most successful gated communities in the city. The same thing applies with Miralong, where the minimum lot size is quite less than what the underlying zoning would have required. I'm sure there are more, but those are the two that come to mind. And then, same thing applies to the minimum lot depth. 120 foot is required. The applicant is proposing 75 feet. Same thing with lot width. 130 feet is required. The proposal is for 38 feet. Now, as for the setbacks, with front, side, and rear, they also need deviations from the code, as they are not in compliance. And the lot coverage is in compliance. 30% is required. The overall lot coverage will be 27. And then, the open space. The code requires 50%. The applicant is proposing 34%. Now, as for heights, initially, two of the proposed heights, especially for the apartment and the single-family residential, as at the time that the staff report was posted, those were not in compliance. But the, you just, I think a moment ago, revised exhibits were given to the commissioners. They have since revised the heights to become compliant. So they are, none of them is exceeding the 24 feet required in the R2 zone. So those are all in compliant. Because typically, you cannot exceed height limitation with PDD. If that were to happen, the high-rise ordinance would be triggered. And because of the special setback requires for high-rise ordinance, as least for now, the applicant is sticking with the maximum height limitation allowed in R2 zone. Again, this is pre-app. That is the project. At this point, what staff will be asking for after hearing from the applicant's directions and comments on, as the applicant prepares and continues to put together the formal submittal.
Let's first see if we have any questions for staff from the commissioners. Commissioner Baker?
Hi, good evening. Couple of questions here. In your discussion with the developer on the setbacks, what was their rationale for not conforming?
So, because it's going to be a plan development district, and because of the mix of residential uses there, so, and they also want to maximize the number of residential units that are being proposed, that would be one of the reasons?
I might elaborate a little bit. There is a disconnect between our general plan and our zoning code, because of how old the zoning code is, that makes it virtually impossible to get the density targets that we've established in our general plan, and in the objectives of our housing element that are looking to maximize development on our medium and high-density residential sites, which are very few and far between in the city, such that you have to go through this process and seek relief on some of these development standards in order to meet the density targets. We are looking at, of course, resolving that conflict through the zoning code update, but I think for your benefit, and certainly for that of the public, this is not unusual to use a plan development district to override those kinds of development standards. And I think because of the age of our zoning code, without these deviations, it would be impossible to meet some of our other objectives or the requirements of the general plan.
Thank you, Director. And just to add on that, do we have, what is the timetable for the zoning code to be official?
I would love to say sooner than later, but I think realistically, we're looking into the latter half of next year. So we're still a good 12 to 18 months away from a new zoning code.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rotman?
Thank you. Just a quick question. So on the townhouses, they have like a five-foot apron in front of the garage, but I didn't see anything sort of addressing that setback. Is that, is that normal or allowed, or how does?
Again, let me go back there a squig. Talking on the site plan, from the site plan, right?
You can even see, under the duplex and triplex in the lower right corner.
Yeah.
It shows, go to the lower right corner where the units are. It says five feet in front of the garage. And when you look at the site plan, it's, in most cases, it's five feet. The garage door is five feet from the street.
I'd probably allow the applicant to speak to that a little bit. Again, this is still in, still, these are very conceptual in nature, so I will let him speak to that.
Can you restate the question? So?
I'm curious whether a five-foot setback for a garage door from a street has been, is there precedent, number one, or is it allowed?
I think that we can do some additional digging into that, and I think we can have the applicant speak to the rationale for proposing that. It is preliminary, so I think if there is a concern, or I think through the process, we can potentially resolve whether that's the appropriate setback, if that makes sense.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Murphy?
A question for staff. In the staff report, there was a reference to the project offering moderate to low income. And then, I think in the letter, there was a reference to low and very low income. So, can you clarify, A, what the difference is in income, and B, what, and maybe this can go to the applicant, but what is actually proposed? It's not a trick question. I'm just looking for clarification, because I don't know.
I think that we can have the applicant certainly speak to what their intention is. I can say that those definitions are set both by HUD at the federal level and then through HCD at the state level. Typically, low income tends to be sort of 30 to 80% AMI. Moderate tends to be 80 to 115% AMI, and then very low tends to be that sort of below 30% threshold. So of course, I think the economics of those different income bands plays into what's viable for an affordable housing project. And I think the applicant can certainly speak to what their understanding of that is, what their plan is, and how they plan to pencil that out. I would imagine at this stage of the process, they're still sorting some of that out. There's very complex tax incentives and tax breaks available from the state, depending on what income levels you're proposing, and based on your location, and all sorts of different things that I'm sure at this point in the process, they haven't fully worked through. But that's what I understand of the income levels, and I think we can have the applicant speak to where they are in those discussions at this point in the process.
Okay, so at this point, we're not sure, staff isn't sure where it's going to fall on that scale of moderate to very low?
That's right, yeah. And I would say, for us, the definition of affordable housing is anything from moderate down, and making sure that there's some deed restriction. So that would be our objective as the city, and how we ensure that it's affordable and that it remains affordable, is that it's at that moderate or below, and that there's some kind of deed restriction to, to ensure that it is affordable and remains affordable. And then, there are some complicated conversations that have yet to be had in terms of what actually pencils out.
Okay.
But I think the purpose of tonight is to hear your preference, certainly, as the commissioner, on where we should.
And then getting credit from the state for affordable housing, does that apply to that, again, that whole range from moderate to very low, or does it, is there a preference? Do you know how that?
Yeah.
So the state has no opinion about, if we, if hypothetically, they were all moderate and no very low, we would get, the city would then get credit for adding?
Oh, you mean in terms of arena numbers?
Yes.
Oh, oh, no, that definitely does play into our arena allocations. Break it out by very low and low combined, then moderate, and then market and above. So yes, we do have, and I don't have the breakdown, I know half of our 2,600 units in our arena allocation are moderate and below, and I want to say within that, about half are moderate and half are low and very low.
Okay.
So depending where it lies, we would, it would count in one of those buckets.
Okay. So we can take that into consideration on the planning commission?
It's a complicated response to that. I think for, we have very limited tools in terms of enforcing or forcing people to meet our arena allocations or provide affordable housing. But, you know, as a plan development district, certainly, this is a very discretionary process, and I think for the purposes of tonight, the applicant would be curious to know where your thoughts are.
Okay, thank you.
Alternate Commissioner Hernandez, do you have any questions?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I just have one or two questions of staff before we move on to the developer. Like my fellow commissioners, it sounds like I'm particularly concerned about the affordable component. Can you tie, as a condition of approval, can you tie the issuance of the building permit for the single-family homes into issuance of a building permit for the affordable apartments?
I may ask our city attorney to assist with this, but I have seen it done where you are tying, you can require certain phases of the development to happen first. And I've seen it done, for example, in Serena Park, which you all saw recently, and the city council saw recently, where we said the park, which in their case was the public benefit through their PDD, had to occur by the issuance of building permit number 80 of the 386 units in that development. So I have seen it done, but I may ultimately ask if our city attorney has additional thoughts on that.
Okay, then my other question would be, this apartment complex has 20 units, which is?
We can't hear you.
Was that directed to me, Chris? I can't hear you. You are showing up muted as the planning commission chamber host. You are showing up muted as the planning commission chamber host.
We're having a technical challenge there. So I think go on to your second question.
Okay. Well, we're working on that. My other question would be for staff, not necessarily the city attorney. The number of units, 20 units, to me seems small from what I've seen of affordable apartment developments. And I'm curious about the financial feasibility, which I'm sure that staff cannot speak to. But of the units that we have developed ourselves or participated in, are there other developments for affordable apartments as small as this?
Not in recent memory in Palm Springs. I mean, we are working on projects in the north end of the city that are sort of six units, but they're more sort of individual unit infill lots and ADUs and things of that sort.
Are those for-sale units?
Some of them are for sale, yeah. So different economics, different projects. I think we might defer to the applicant to speak to what they understand of the feasibility of this. But I'm, I'm not able to think of a recent project of that scale.
Okay. Do we have our city attorney available now?
Tari, can you hear us?
I can now, can you hear me?
Yes, okay.
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. What Chris said about the phasing of the development is accurate. And did you have further questions in addition to that? Or was that, did he fully answer your question? I, it did cut in and out a little bit as he was speaking.
I think the main question was whether, as a condition of approval of the plan development district, they could, you know, require that the affordable housing project be tied to some, you know, whether it's before issuance of the first single-family home or issuance of the 40th home, you know, whatever the mechanics are, whether they could condition that the affordable housing project happen at some certain phase of the development. So it sounds like you're saying yes.
I do believe that that is possible.
Thank you. Do we have any, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, that is consistent with, with your authority.
Okay. Any last questions for staff before we ask the applicant to come forward? Nope, seeing none. I would invite Mr. Gonzalez to come forward and tell us about his project.
Tess? Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners and Staff. My name is Mario Gonzalez on behalf of GHA Investments and Far West Industries, 30875 Date Palm Drive, Cathedral City, California. I'm the applicant. Thank you for the opportunity to present and discuss our most current Palm Springs development, The Village at Racket Club. Our partnership brings over 80 years of experience in real estate, planning, development, construction, and residential multifamily and commercial projects locally and abroad. GHA and Far West have developed projects in Palm Springs and the Coachella Valley for the past four decades, building over 550 units within 10 separate developments in Palm Springs alone. I would like to point out that I am joined this evening by our professional team members, civil engineering firm High Tech Engineering, architects, de-mailing and associates, and research and planning Terranova. Should you like to address any specific disciplines of our development with any of these seasoned professionals, which I think we can address if you'd like on the affordability issue. I'd like to thank your principal planner, Mr. Edward Roberts, and thank your city planning director, Christopher Hadwin, and Rick Minarez for their time and guidance. Mr. Robertson is always professional and challenges our team with a very clear pathway of what the city requires and expects for successful projects in today's world. And I might add, we don't always agree, but it's great working with him. We started our feasibility work for this project in November of 2024, learning that several other projects were proposed for this site, all to no avail. This site is challenging for many seasoned developers. There are many irregular parcels, easements, existing infrastructure, and dated and abandoned services that once existed. This results to many unexpected costs for removal of idle power poles, including the distribution power poles on the south side of Racket Club. The Village of Racket Club can be developed with your support that will require flexibility and relief from certain development standards, as Mr. Robertson articulates. This is offered through your city entitlement process via Plan Development District Application, PDD. Our proposed project offers a mix of housing options in one village setting, a range of prices, square footages, and features to fit our buyer's lifestyle. Buyers have choices and want options. The Village includes a main entry point from Racket Club Drive and a secondary access from Villa Oliva, a dog park, walking pass, common pool and spa and pool building to lounge barbecue, all managed by an HOA, and guest parking is provided within the community. Modern and contemporary-style architecture with architectural elements, veneer accents, rich contrasting colors, balconies, and upgraded garage doors. A 20-unit affordable housing building with direct access from Rochelle Road, a two-story building that has private patios and balconies and its own private common area, its own parking lot with its own trash area. 53 townhomes, each with two-car garages and rear yards, large enough for optional small pools, all two-story buildings with a maximum building height of 24 feet. All townhomes on Racket Club Drive have rear access to Racket Club Drive via a private gate. 31 single-family homes, each with two-car garages and two-car driveways, rear yards large enough for pools, all two-story buildings with a maximum height of 24 feet. All single-family homes backing up to Racket Club Drive will have direct access to Racket Club Drive via private gate. 104 total units is proposed, an overall density of 12.6 units over 8.23 gross acres. A table labeled The Village at Racket Club Zoning Analysis provided and provides details for existing zoning versus our proposed PDD standards for a project, as was discussed. Addressing setbacks on Racket Club, Indian Avenue with increased setbacks at the Grace Lewis Home, and I may mention 40 feet from the back of our units to our property line, plus the distance of the setback from her home to the property line. So we start off with 40 feet there, I might point out. Our preliminary site plan offers measurements for setbacks, road widths, curb radiuses, and spot grades for your convenience and review. This has all been thoughtfully planned out with our engineers. Finally, I'd like to address our proposed entry gates for our project. I do understand that this is a touchy subject for many, although I do understand that the planning commission does have the authority to approve gates. Buyers want safety, security, and privacy. Gates help provide this, and gates maintain property values. All communities surrounding our project are gated, Colony Racket Club, 43 at Racket Club. And I don't have to tell you about the unfortunate homeless crisis we are all living with, and it's only getting worse. Theft is a huge concern, whereby an unsecured community does not have a chance against the homeless or folks that have no business in your community other than monkey business. Our project is located at the north end of town. Our part of town is generally undeveloped, south of Racket Club and Villa Oliva. I beg this commission to support our gates and see the value that they provide. I'm here to assure you that our company and team are committed. We have passion, the resources, energy, and the vision to only develop high-quality property-designed communities, highest and best use that fit into the fabric of the community now and in the future. Mr. Robertson so eloquently provided so many project details, and I hope you found our project information booklets helpful. I'm happy to answer any questions. And I do have one of our consultants that is pretty proficient with the affordable component, if you would like her to address that. And I would like to address a couple of things that I did hear. Mr. Baker, Commissioner Baker, excuse me, on the setback issue of why it's for density, as was Mr. Hadwin mentioned, to get the density in the units and maximize the units on his property, we went ahead and had to do that. So on the single-family homes, we have 18-foot driveways. And on the townhomes, we have the five-foot driveways, enough to put PU for utilities and so forth. And I did hear that, that was also brought up by Commissioner Robin, or Rotman, excuse me. And I have the same answer for that as far as, you know, the setback and the five-foot is for, to get the density that we needed and get the units. And after doing this for about 40 years, you know, sometimes I question why, in some cases, you want such big yards when people mostly live in their backyard. So, but we did that for the density to try to maximize our density in this project. And then I did hear from Commissioner Murphy that you had some questions about the apartments and so forth. And as I mentioned, Nicole Chris from Terranova can come up and address that if you would like.
At this point, I'll look at the commissioners and see, would you like to ask questions? Or are you ready to ask questions and give some feedback to the applicant? Questions first? All right, we'll go reverse order this time, Mr. Rotman.
Yep, thank you. So as you approach this project and you're going to do a track map, are you, are each of the individual single-family homes going to be their own, their own property? And the apartment would be separated as a separate property? And then the townhouses, would that be a third property?
So what, that's a great question, Commissioner, thank you. Yes, so if you look at the site map here on the screen, the orange represents the townhomes. And what we'll have in this whole entire community is a track map with a couple of parcels. And the apartment parcel will be an individual parcel, will be part of our application, will design it, will make sure all the engineering, everything works. And then in the center of our property, we do have the single-family homes. And that will be governed by homeowner association. We'll have a sub-association for the townhomes. And so townhomes, the folks will, anything outside of their front yards or their rear yards or their fronts will be maintained by homeowner association. And then on a single family, they'll own those individual lots. Though, that'll be their property. They'll maintain their own landscaping and so forth. And, and then the pool will just be a common area. Hope I answered your question.
So, so there will be a separation in terms of the track map between the townhomes and the single-family?
No, no, they'll all, they'll all be able to walk around the whole community in respect to the townhomes and the single-family homes. People can walk to the front door of any one of those homes. Yes.
And is there a gate, or I'm sorry, a wall that separates the apartments from the single-family and the townhouses?
There is. And I don't have that cool little tool, but right where the parking lot is off of Rochelle is, is, is the parking lot to the right there, to the right a little bit, please, right, 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 right there. So that, that is an access to the parking lot for the apartments, have a proper trash area. And to the left there, there is a block wall that separates the, the townhomes and the single-family from the apartment.
Okay. And what kind of amenities do you plan for the apartments?
So if, if we can zoom in on the apartments, we have a, a passive area there for barbecuing, for, for sitting, and a little grass area there. And in the corner, we're trying to incorporate a retention basin for maybe a little grass patch as well there.
Okay. But they, the residents from the apartments won't have access to the pool or the common areas in the?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll come back to. Okay, I think that's it for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The single-family homes bordering Racket Club, I think I heard you say, and I didn't see it on the graphic, that there'll be, no, up to Racket Club, that there'll be access to each of those single-family homes from Racket Club? Pedestrian access? Did, did I hear that correctly?
Yes, sir, that is correct. And right, we're, Sir Robertson's pointing out there, and I don't know if you could blow that up, but we, on those row of homes that back up to Racket Club, there, there will be a gate for access if they'd like to go.
For each unit?
Yes, sir. The, the units that do face and back up to Racket Club.
Okay.
That is correct. As well as the homes that back up, the townhomes that back up to Racket Club, they will also have access to there.
Okay.
And I may point out too, that over to the left, down a little bit, we have a, a future pedestrian access to the future development, whatever that's going to be, the commercial. And we have one down at the bottom as well, the bottom left-hand corner. So we have two access points to the future commercial or whatever is going to be put there. So we are anticipating that there's proper pathways and, and access to that future development.
So along Racket Club, then, there's, you're requesting a smaller setback. And I'm just wondering, do we, do we have a graphic here that shows what that wall surface would look like with X number of gates accessing the? Do we have a graphic to look at what that might look like?
I think we have one in, we just, we have this last, we have street sections on the last engineer exhibit.
It's not critical, I was just, I just wanted to get a sense of what, how that would look from Racket Club
Yeah.
to see a wall that's closer than we're used to seeing to the sidewalk with a lot of gates accessing each of these units.
So I will say that with respect to, to, I do have an exhibit here, and I don't know if I can share it. It's kind of small, and I was prepared to answer that. So on, on, on Racket Club Drive, we have our curb. And we're complying with the full street section on Racket Club according to, you know, meeting with our engineer, your engineer and so forth. So from back of curb to our wall, there is 12 feet. And what's interesting is that they want an eight-foot sidewalk there, which is pretty big. And I understand that there's some discussions about some roadwork that might be redone or reclassified or whatever on Racket Club. And then also, we have another couple of feet where our wall is going to jog in and out on that street to give some interest and to break it up and give you some undulation, where it'll give us a little more landscape as we jog that wall into the backyards of those units because we have 25 feet minimums on the backyards of the townhomes and the single-family homes on Racket Club.
Okay, so when, when, not for the study session, but when you come back, that would be good to see a really good graphic of what that's going to look like.
We can provide an exhibit.
The other question I had on the apartments, it looked in the graphic like the apartments facing Indian Canyon had little patios with a door? Or access to that open area? Could, could you just describe what's going on?
We could if, Robertson, if you want.
I'm assuming there's no.
Do you want to go to the elevation?
There's no access to, from the sidewalk, there's no access to the apartments other than through the entry gates, one near the parking lot and one on Racket Club. Is that right?
Right, right now, there, there is no access. They will not have any access to Indian Avenue from those back porches right there. What I think you see, sir, there is a little bit of a relief, you know, so that we can give you a little bit of relief there and not just go flat across there. But if that's something that you would like us to consider, we definitely can, can look at that.
Well, I was just wondering, yeah, how, for security, for one, and, and aesthetics, like the residents that live on that lower floor, would they have, would they have the ability to come and go out to Indian Canyon? Or would there be some kind of fence or wall?
I, I think to.
What's the plan?
So first of all, we have 25 feet setback on, on Indian Avenue to the building. And so, so we have a nice green spot there. And, and if you like, I think right now, we would not put gates on those patios. And they're not huge. So if they did want to bring a barbecue or something like that, I think you could bring it through the apartment building because there'll be probably a sliding glass door or something to access to those patios.
Okay. Well, that was my, my concern, I guess, or question, was security for all of the residents that live in that apartment.
Absolutely.
Having people come and go from Indian Canyon into the buildings might, might not be the best idea.
So it sounds like something that you would like us not to put any gates in those patios? Or you prefer that?
I don't know what the solution is. I just would be, I'm a little concerned about that part of it, the plan, the security element to it. The aesthetics is fine. So that was one comment I had. The other, and this is a, I don't know exactly how to describe it, but one of the, the, the project. The other, and this is a, I don't know exactly how to describe it, but one of the, the project, on page 11, I think, is of, of your letter, it's, "The project creates an integrated neighborhood." And by integrated, I think you're talking about economic affordability, not for the affordable, affordable units, but for the rest of the development. Because you're, you're intending to offer these at a, I assume, a pretty wide rep price range.
Yes.
Is that what you mean by integrated?
Yes. And at this time, we, we don't know where we're, we have an idea where we're going to be priced, but what we tried to do here was provide as many units as we can, being sensitive to the area, and, and knowing that prior to our development, there was several projects that had higher densities and so forth. And so, we tried to achieve the highest density that we could by doing that, and, and having a mix of units where we have different price points and specs and so forth. So, with the three product types, we thought we would, you know, the affordability is something that I think is important. And I, I have the restaurant here in town, and I think out of 46 people, I have two people that only live in Palm Springs, because there's nothing there. And, you know, that's, it's to be determined how we want to handle it, but it's really important to me that we, we create the highest and best use of that building. And yes, it's not a huge building, but it's something that, you know, is giving us some, some proper density.
Okay. And then would, would you be amenable to, assuming from city staff, we have the ability to offer opinions about the mix of affordability, so that we don't end up with 20 all moderate, you know, only moderate income? And that there's a mix of maybe moderate, low, and very low? When the time comes?
Sure.
Would that be something you guys...
I think we have a pretty good relationship, and, and staff has been great in guiding me through to this part. And it's something that's important. But also, you know, affordable housing projects are really difficult because of financing and so forth. So, you know, I, I want this thing, as Vice Chairwoman mentioned, you know, not to come at a later date, and, and I'm okay with, with trying to phase it in, but it's, it's not real easy finding dollars, especially after the RDA went away and so forth. But they're still doing it, and, and we could definitely talk with them. We'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Baker.
Hi, okay, let's see. So, let's begin with the egress and ingress on, from Racket Club. As you alluded to, the city is about to change the whole traffic pattern on Racket Club, adding Class II, I believe, bike lanes. So, is that going to be, especially from engineering, if I'm driving westbound on Racket Club, is that going to be a problem entering into that driveway on a routine basis, especially during rush hour traffic? Because that's, that, I live off of Racket Club, so that, that gets very busy, depending on the time of day or evening.
Well, as was pointed out, that this is a preliminary hearing, and we, we're probably going to be mandated to go ahead and provide traffic studies and so forth. So, I think that's something, sir, that we, we will look at that time. You know, it is important to us, you know, how we access our projects. But we did line it up with the street right acrossway, so it's probably a very proper location to, to have this access point. It, it gives us a really good definition when you come in, you either go right to your townhomes, you go left into the single-family. But I, I do have our engineer here that may want to speak to that if you'd like, sir.
Yeah, because that's going to be problematic.
Is that a certain thing, or...
Oh, yeah, it's happening.
Okay.
Well, there, I don't think the project is finalized, so I know that there was, there was a public meeting on it recently. But, I mean, I, I think, to the point that's been made, there'll be much more study on this to see how that needs to work, and they would need to comply with any engineering requirements.
Okay. And my next question is on the affordable housing. What, are you using any type of special financing to finance the affordable portion of that?
So, Commissioner, at this time, it's to be determined.
Okay.
I, I'm not sure. And, and I want to challenge the highest and best use for that little site there. It, I think it'll be a really cool project. And that's to be determined, and how we, we treat that. And certainly, I can have discussions about the levels as was discussed.
Okay. And moving on to open space, you have a reduction of 16% from the recommend, from the requirement. Do you have any thoughts on, on that? Because it does seem very tight.
So, if you look up at the screen, the lots on Racket Club have 25-foot backyard, they have access, and most folks who live in Palm Springs want their own private pool. So, we, we, it was important to us to try to create that environment for them. The pools on the single-family homes will be included in, in the purchase price.
Oh, they will be, they're not...
They're not optional, no.
Oh.
And, and, you know, things could change, Commissioner. I mean, you know, the market could change and so forth, but currently, we, we're proposing, we designed them for that. And, and, and also, on the south side of the project, of the townhomes, you have 25-foot yard setbacks. We were very conscious of that, and, and the setback was there, 25 feet. And then behind the historical home, we have 40 feet of backyard. So, we have some pretty good yard space. And then we also have the common pool, which is right in the middle of the project, that'll provide some, some great open space. But, and then also, we have a dog park down at the bottom left, which, which I think is right, bottom left, on Alvera, I'm sorry, on Alvera, right there. We have, we have a little dog park there, it has a pathway that brings them in from the, from the project.
Oh, that's a dog park, okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Baker, if I might just sort of jump in a little bit and elaborate on the points that we discussed earlier, open space is one of the biggest impediments that we're finding in terms of the development standards in our multifamily and higher-density zoning districts that are limiting the way that we define it, the way that it's calculated currently. It's one of the stumbling blocks in terms of being able to achieve the density of the general plan. So, we've seen this come up by several projects.
Let's just ask these thoughts on it, yeah.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Okay. Oh, and lastly, we haven't gotten to this yet, but on the landscaping, I would strongly encourage you to consider adding twice as many trees as you have. Especially in front of the single-family homes, it's only every other house that has a tree. I can see it's tight for the townhomes, because there's no, the driveways take up all the space. But at least on that main street where the single-family homes are, it seems like there's room for additional shade. I mean, we're, that's huge. As well as for the pool area, I would highly recommend some type of shade structure, because you just have absolute sun. There's no way to escape the sun if you're sitting out on those chairs all day long.
We, we do have a, I don't know if you were, in your packets, you have the pool building, and we also have a landscape, some exhibits in your, in your packet that are very specific to the landscape. We have a very, very good landscaping professional, and I'm going to make sure we note that, sir. Landscape is important, it sets a tone for the community, and I agree with you. It's very, very important to me. And, and if I might add, on, on the open space, as you mentioned, you know, the more open space, you have to be careful, because it creates a higher HOA. So, there's a balance with that, right? And then we have, you know, the drought issue and everything else, so. But I noted what you, what you mentioned, thank you.
And the, the 500-pound gorilla in the wall is the gated community? I see you, you gave information on neighboring projects that do have gates. That's a very sticky situation. I just, I'm going to pass that one on to Vice Chair Elena. I'm sure she has more to say on that than...
Thank you. First, I'll head over to alternate Hernandez and see if she has questions.
I do, thank you. Regarding the affordable housing, are you working with the city with your affordable housing project, or is that initiative solely from your company?
I have met with your, your, your city staff folks, I think Val is one of them. And then I, I'm sorry, I met with the young lady who was with him. And, and I've reached out to them and had some meetings with them. And, and like I said, I'm, I'm still determining that, because I want to make sure it really benefits, you know, the city here. So, but I have spoken with them, yes.
It truly does benefit us. In fact, we need more developers to, to come with affordable housing ideas and projects. I do have to say, though, that unfortunately, my stance with a gated community is nonexistent. I feel that they offer a false sense of security. And HOAs over the past decade are probably more across the nation, but specifically a problem in California have just increased tremendously their, their costs. And the gated communities, I feel like they, they leverage the, the gated portion a lot to increase cost and, and maintenance. Not to mention that it's a huge inconvenience for residents and guests and, and delivery companies. It's, it's really a pain. But hopefully, somebody else can put that more, in a more articulate way than, than I. But, yeah, I, I don't think for specifically your project, that is supposed to have a sense of village, I don't think the gated community sends that message. In fact, I feel that it does the opposite, where it sends a message of exclusivity versus inclusivity. But definitely, you know, probably take a closer look at that, what message it's really sending.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baker.
One quick question. We did receive a public response regarding the name, the Village, because there apparently is another community close by with that same name. And yet, on this diagram we're handed, it's called Colony at Racket Club. So, are you tied to the name Village, or is there some wiggle room on that?
Certainly, we don't want to, you know, have two projects that have the same name. And...
In the same neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm open to that, but, you know, it is kind of like a village atmosphere, so that's why we kind of did that. But I'm open to it.
Yeah, I didn't know this either, but someone did bring it to our attention, there is already a Village, or the Village.
I'm, I'm open to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We seem to have rolled some comments and questions all in together. I want to go back to Commissioner Rotman, and everybody else gave a lot of comments. Do you have comments as well as your questions?
I do, thank you for asking. So, we'll talk about the pool. The way the wind typically comes in this neighborhood, it comes from the, the northwest, and your pool is wide open to having wind blowing at it. You might consider reorienting the project so that it's a little bit more protected. I know if you go to Miralong and you go to the pool there, you can barely, I mean, the umbrellas fly away, the, you know, the shades lounges fly away, so just, you may want to take that in consideration in your site plan. I agree with Commissioner Baker. I think the landscaping looks light, both along the single-family residential area. And part of the reason I raised the question about the five-foot setback at the townhouses is that there's no opportunity really for any kind of landscaping trees, street trees or anything like that. And I think as dense as this project is in that area, I think you're going to need it to sort of soften the streetscape. I might ask if you could drop three or four units out of that and give a little bit more breathing room between, all of a sudden, I feel like I have sound. Yeah, to drop a few of the townhouses and give a little bit more breathing room between buildings, as well as it might afford you better landscaping opportunities. Let's see here. I, based on the staff report, I don't think there's justification for the gate personally. The staff report mentions it has to do with protecting against traffic, parking, I'm sorry, parking, coming into your development. I don't see that as an issue for you. And likewise, I don't see your parking needs impacting the public streets either. So, other than security, I don't think there's a good justification for gating the project. Let's see here. I, well, I'll wait to see what the overall streetscape looks like with the townhouses and the units, but I, I think it needs some distinction, other than just color. But I'll leave that up to the architect. A couple of things, on the apartment project, there's, as you turn the corner, this would be the units facing Indian Canyon, and then one that would face Rochelle. You have a blank wall that currently is blue over on the right side, you'll see it. And there's an opportunity to put a window in a bedroom there. And I think that might be a good opportunity to add a little bit to the elevation, as well as adding a little bit more to that unit. I'm not overly fond of the architecture for the apartments, particularly the eyebrows over the windows that kind of float. When you look at the architecture for the townhouses and the single-family, all of the eyebrows tend to be rooted or attached to something. I think they look kind of silly, the way it's rendered in the, on the apartments. And lastly, being a little on the liberal side, and I've done a lot of multifamily housing, there are some theories that it's a good thing to allow affordable housing to mix with market rate, and that it shouldn't necessarily be completely separated. And you might want to just think about that. If you're trying to create a Village or a community, this, that might be something to consider. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Murphy.
We're in comments. I have the same impression that, and somewhere in the letters, I think it was, there was a reference to the, you know, wanting to avoid kind of the typical monotony of streetscapes. And I understand the tension between achieving density and, you know, uniformity. And I know you've done other projects, good projects, The View...
This'll be a good project.
The Vibe, et cetera. But I also had the same feeling, like, and, and I'm not a designer, but I just wondered if there was any way to reorient some of the streetscape, so that we don't, or the residents that buy into this, don't end up with, you know, yet another HOA development that's, in my opinion, has kind of a monotonous streetscape. And I don't know what the solution is, but that's just my feedback, looking at it. And, and maybe it's just color, but some variation to the street, so that it doesn't look so similar. That, that's one comment I had. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
May I add one more thing that's, plays off of Commissioner Murphy? So, in the past, what I've done is on the single-family, or even the townhouses, where you have a unit on a corner, instead of having the garage facing the same direction as every other garage door, to do it off the side street. And that breaks up, that breaks up some of the monotony of garage door after garage door after garage door. Thank you.
All right, and Commissioner, or, as, when you, Assistant Commissioner? Alternate Commissioner, there we are. Hernandez, did, did, last, everybody's getting their last comments or questions in. Do you have anything else you wanted to add? Okay. I do have some questions and some comments, and I'll make them, try to make them quick and make them all in the form of comments. I share the concern about the affordable component. I think it is absolutely critical for a project of this nature, where you're asking the city to grant concessions on the distance between buildings, the setbacks on three sides, the amount of open space. Those are deep concessions, and in exchange, the public benefit has to be substantive. I sense that there hasn't been a lot of investigation into... I sense that there hasn't been a lot of investigation into the financing and the design, what works for affordable opponent apartments, I would encourage you to get a qualified developer or partner to work on that, and that you tally up how many tax credits you qualify for, and find out what the minimum, I think everybody now has to come up with every tax credit available in order to even be eligible for that, and that makes a difference pretty much as to whether or not you can build the project, so I'd encourage you to invest some time in that, that's going to be an important component. I also recognize that there's a whole lot going on, on a small piece of land, and that's a good thing, that's what we want, and I'm hoping that, to the extent permitted by the zoning ordinance, you can work with staff, and staff can work with the attorneys to find out a way to allow you greater height, I think that would help, not next to the single-family residences, and particularly not next to the historic one, but towards the interior site, if you could get a next, get some extra height there, and get a third floor on some of those, I think this site could stand it, there's not much, other than the nearby single-family residences, that would be adversely impacted by getting some more height in there. So, the, for me, the issue is all going to come down to how to make sure that the public benefits are sufficient for the depth of concessions that are being granted. I'm hoping that if you can't make an affordable project, that you, or can't make it substantive, that then you are looking at other public benefits for the project, or to the, to the neighbors in particular of the project, but to the benefit of the, the community as a whole. I also share the same comments about the walls and gates, I think that one of the things that this project reminds me of is right, kind of catty corner of the 48 at Racket Club, where they have walls and individual gates to each of the Racket Club facing units, and something like that might be able to be done, but what we have there is very castle-like and foreboding, and this should be more accessible and more integrated into the community, and so that it has a kinder, gentler street frontage, it should look as though it's part of the community. I understand that security is a concern, and walls and gates are the first things, and they're, they're the easy go-to place to increase security, or as alternate Hernandez says, it's more perceived security. I think that if you look at some of the principles of CEPTED, you'll be able to see some very creative things that can be done to make an un-gated community more secure, through your landscaping, through your lighting, through your definition with short walls and other physical elements of where boundaries are, where you can go and not, and most importantly, the number one thing is getting eyes on the street and on the areas where people can go, because that is a surer thing than building walls that people can and do bring ladders up to or vault over. So, those are my comments, and I'm gonna, I realize we've spent more time on this issue than was allocated, and I apologize to others who have, are waiting for the other items, but I think this is important, and this is your opportunity to hear from us, and it's so much, I think, more beneficial to you in the long run, even if it can be painful, than waiting until you have invested a great, great deal more in the design and come forward, and we start offering these comments.
I will ask if, if I can get some guidance from staff, because what you just mentioned about gates and walls and stuff, you're a developer, I guess, I don't know how you would do that, and people want privacy, they want security, they want safety, and I mean, if you have a pool in the backyard and you have no walls and stuff, I just, I, in forty-seven years, I just don't know how to make that work, but.
Are you, are you familiar with CEPTED?
No.
It's C-E-P-T-D, Community.
Where's it at?
No, excuse me, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. Your experts on this are the police department, and they frequently have community resources officers that will come to existing neighborhoods, but they'll also talk to designers and tell them, yes, here are some of the principles, here are things that you can be doing to make sure that you are not designing and building something that is going to allow places for people to hide, that is going to allow obstructions to residents being able to see what is going on in the area, here are the different things, and it addresses, here, I printed this out as a reminder for me, and I'd be happy to share it with you. But it is a movement that's been going on for, what, I don't know, ten, fifteen years now, where neighborhoods are concerned about prevention of crime, and they want to be designing, and the police department is wholly engaged with making sure that we aren't creating more problems than we're solving, and so they're usually a good resource.
Is that being done right now anywhere in the city?
I'm, I'm more familiar with other cities that have really active outreach programs, I don't honestly know, perhaps Director Hadwin can tell us the extent to which.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think it's hard to point to any specific project, it really is just kind of principles that are incorporated into various aspects of work throughout the community, so I do know that our police department has engaged a lot with different CEPTED experts on different ways of integrating this into the community, they have done different works in terms of advocating, activating spaces around the washes, for example, or working, like you're saying, with existing HOAs or other ungated communities to try and incorporate some of these principles, so it, it really is more of a sort of theory of planning and design, and I think there's, there's a lot of information available online about the different principles and how to incorporate it into this. I will add that the general plan is very clear, that using gated communities and gates as a way of controlling the unhoused or safety issues is not permitted, it's not permitted by the general plan, so I just want to be clear on that.
And I'll add one other thing, and that is, is part of what we do here, I'm supposed to disclose when I've had conversations or meetings with interested parties, and I will say that Mario and I have spoken on the phone, we did talk a little bit about the project, and I understand some of your concerns with other developments that have struggled with safety and with problems with people who are unsheltered, and I think that the location you're looking at now is not going to be nearly as popular for unhoused people to gather, and I think it will be very different, you're not on the wash, and you're not downtown, downtown is where people who need access to services, and need access to transportation, and need things that are not available to them, will go to, see if they can solicit help from businesses or from individuals, and where you're proposing this project, you're not going to be so attractive, because you're further removed, there isn't the same transportation there, there's not the wash where people can essentially tuck away under a bridge or something like that, I think that, that this is a better location, and that with working with a couple of those principles in the design, you'll, you too will have a greater sense of security in what you're going to be providing for your future residents.
Is there a, a shelter just up the road from us, on, off Indian Avenue?
It's ways up there, and the thing is that you don't necessarily get to come and go from that, if somebody leaves, there's nothing for them in the immediate area, and they typically would be taking a bus downtown, where there is greater opportunity for them to live unsheltered.
Thank you.
Okay, any other last minute things? All right, thank you, and we will move on to the regular session of the Planning Commission, after I establish whether or not anybody would like a five-minute break. Apparently, we will adjourn for five minutes and reconvene for our regular session at All right, we will now call to order the 6:00 PM regular meeting of the Planning Commission, and may we have a roll call, please?
Chair Wermick is excused, Vice Chair Alain.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Miller is excused, Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Rotman.
Here.
And Commissioner Morales excused, and Alternate Hernandez.
Here.
May we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, the agenda was available for public access at the City Hall Exterior Bulletin Board and online by 6:00 PM on Thursday, October 9th, in accordance with our policies and procedures.
Thank you. Next is acceptance of the agenda, are there any modifications to the agenda before we vote on accepting it?
Madam Vice Chair, we have had a request from the applicant for item 2A, which is a request by EMP2 LLC regarding the tentative track maps in the Ascena development, to continue that item, just based on some information that's come to light, so they've made that request to continue that to a future meeting, and staff would request that it be to a date uncertain.
All right, do we have a motion then, from one of the commissioners, to accept the agenda with that note, a continuation?
I move to accept.
Second.
And that is to a date uncertain?
Correct.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty, next up is we have the public comment. This is the time that's been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on the consent calendar and other agenda items, and items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission, although the Planning Commission values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on these items. Three minutes are allocated for each person who would like to speak, do we have any members of the public either here with us or online who would like to address the commission at this time?
I see the applicant as present who will speak following the staff report, there are several members online, I've asked them to raise their hand if they wish to speak on this item at this time, so this is item 4A, which is, I'm sorry, if you wish to speak on item 4A, please raise your hand now, this is your time to speak. And that is the Cottonwood Road development. I see no speakers.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
And may we have a roll call vote?
Oh, did you move? I didn't.
That's okay.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
And Commissioner Rotman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Alain.
Yes.
And Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Public hearings, our public hearing has been addressed already by revision of the agenda, there is item three, unfinished business, we have none, item four is new business, an application by Paul Mostrowler on behalf of Joseph Ronnie Hayek owner, proposing the development of a two-unit residential building located at 580 East Cottonwood Road. development of a two-unit residential building located at 580 East Cottonwood Road, cases DP 2024-8, AR 2024-71, and AMM 2024-12. The recommendation is to accept a Class III and a Class 32 categorical exemption pursuant to SEQA, presume, approve the development permit and administrative minor modification subject to conditions of approval in Exhibit A, and recommend approval of the major architectural application by the Architectural Review Committee subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, good evening, commissioners. So this is a small project compared to the one that you were just considering. This is a two-unit residential project at a small lot at the corner of Cottonwood Drive and Via Merrill Est. The project site is a vacant quarter acre legal non-conforming lot in the R2 zone. The proposal are two attached two-story dwelling units with two attached two-car garages. The project has water-efficient landscaping and the standard street improvements. Let me get this thing going. So there's what we just said. Here's some site context. So the corner of this particular property is the one that you see there in the center that is vacant. Surrounding the property is a mix of existing development, mostly built in the 50s and 60s, although there is a two-story condo complex catty-corner or diagonally across the street from the subject site that you see there in the upper right corner of the of the screen. If I can make this thing work, those. So on the next image here, I want to show you the site plan. This is a tight site, and by its density in the R2 zone, it is permitted by the zoning code to be up to four dwelling units per acre. However, in this particular case, in order to put together reasonable-sized units with a good amount of outdoor usable space for each unit, the applicant has requested approval for simply for two. And these, you can see them here. This is both the site plan and the landscape plan. And the landscape plan has a series of shade trees, as you see in both the north and south lots, private pools for each of the homes facing toward the west, and each of them, as I mentioned, have two-car garages, and there is a driveway approach to the garage between the property line and the garage that is enough for another two cars to be parked there. So this is what the units look like. The image on your left is the street-fronting facade on Via Merrill Est. There you see the two front doors, the garages, and the second floor. And I noted in your staff report, this is an interesting way of designing these units, in my opinion, in that they've separated them at the upper level, so they actually give you somewhat of the impression of being two separate dwelling units, which in fact they are, but they are attached at the first-floor unit. On the image on the right, this is the west-facing facade, and I find this one particularly interesting because even though because of the lot size, they've had to request modest reductions through the administrative minor modification process, they have done a lot of things on these dwellings to both ensure privacy between units, privacy to the adjoining residential units, and also to do what I consider a very good job of controlling the solar impact of these units from the westerly sun. They, there you see a little bit of the image of the yards that each of these homes will have, and of course, the open space that you see at the second level. This section helps illustrate the way that those second levels are separated, giving them more light and setback from the actual lower-level walls. These are the first floor, second floor, and roof plans. They're very simple units. They are three bedrooms on the upper floor, kitchen, living room, dining room, and the garage in the first with a small powder room beneath the stairs, and the roof is basically a flat roof, and there are solar photovoltaic panels proposed. So as Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair mentioned, this is a recommendation for a categorical exemption pursuant to SEQA. We're recommending the approval of the major development permit subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A, and that you recommend approval of the major architectural application by the Architectural Review Committee as conditioned. The AMM findings and the findings for the affirmative decision on the major development permit is in your staff report. The development standards are there as well, and I am here to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Commissioner Rotman.
Yeah, just a quick question. On their landscape plan, they call out Mexican fan palms, and I know the city is discouraging the use of those. Is that applied to single-family, or is it more for commercial? The, the use of Philophyres versus robustas is primarily focused on public streets and public trees. So on private development, we are allowing robustas. Okay, all right, thank you.
Does anybody else have questions of staff? I'll ask a follow-up question. We're allowing a species that's been declared invasive, and that even CVWD and Desert Water Agency won't permit?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your first part of your question.
The Washingtonia robusta is an invasive species in the Coachella Valley, and both or all three water districts that I'm aware of will not approve them for anybody for anything.
That's the first I've heard of that.
I think there's a bit of a disconnect between some of the age of our species list and I think what has been determined elsewhere. I think this conversation has come up in multiple contexts in this room and with this body, and I think that it is certainly something UCAL could ask the Architectural Review Committee to consider further and perhaps have a conversation with the applicant about their willingness to find a substitute.
That would be great.
Species.
Any other questions of staff? Then, despite the fact this isn't a public hearing, I'd like to ask the developer if he would like to make any remarks, and I know that I have a question or two for him, and I suspect others might.
My name's Paul Mostholler. I'm the designer and the draftsman. Can you hear me okay?
No, can you speak up, please?
Yeah, I'll do my best. So yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. I noticed there's a discrepancy on the drawings regarding what's going on on the cottonwood side of the property. In one of the drawings, it shows that there's a wall, maybe that's shown in a couple places, but then another drawing shows that there's just ficus packed together all the way down to build a century, to make essentially a landscape separation from the street?
Are you referring to the site plan and the landscape plan?
Sure. Yes, I believe, let's see, A301 and I think A602. Yes, A602 is where we see that we have a green wall of ficus, and then 301 shows that there seems to be a wall plus, what is going on there?
On Cottonwood?
Yes, on the Cottonwood side.
There'll be a ficus hedge, so from the street, you won't be able to see the wall.
Okay. I might be alone on this, but I'm wondering if you might be amenable to something shorter? If you go down Cottonwood, it's open, all the homes, and mostly they seem to be multifamily and little inns, are open back to the structure, and there is no landscape like that, and I just think that this is really going to be a peculiar, a peculiarity in the neighborhood. Whereas if, and really, if you're trying to give the privacy for the swimming pools, you could do that with a wall, and you could do it with much shorter landscaping.
Yeah, I think we'd be open to that. I think you touch on we're wanting privacy in the backyards, and maybe the rules have changed recently. We were proposing a five-foot-tall site wall, but I think maybe it has increased by one foot. I can't remember off the top of my head.
For a pool, for a pool barrier, it is still five feet.
At that, okay. But yeah, we could look at different plants. I think we'd want something sort of tallish, maybe around the six-foot range, but.
I think at six feet, you might work better with the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Or with, it's interesting because the two different streets kind of have a different character, but this is on the Cottonwood side where it's open to structure just about everywhere. Anybody else have questions or comments?
Can you just verify the back of the property where the pools are? What's planned for wall and vegetation along, because the pool looks like it goes right up to, I can't tell, is that the ficus hedge you were just referring to? Okay. Okay.
Also, ficus, you don't want ficus near your swimming pool because they're roots.
Roots could be, yeah.
Do bad things.
The only other comment I had on landscaping was the front, so facing Merrill Est. That looked to me like it could use some trees instead of just flat, low landscaping. That wouldn't be a requirement. I wouldn't put it into a condition, but it looked a little sparse from my perspective.
Yeah, I think on the north unit, we could do something like that. The south unit might be a little tough. We have the corner cut back, and we're not allowed tall plants in that area. And then also touching on the palm trees, we'd be open to a different species. We're not set on those.
I know it's east-facing, so you're not going to be as concerned about sun and shade facing east, but just more for the aesthetics in the neighborhood, I thought, you know, having one or two shade trees would be a nice addition.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Any other comments? Alternate Commissioner Hernandez?
Are we in the comment or question phase or both?
Sure. Bring it on. Bring it on.
Okay, so.
I think we can thank the developer and allow him to be seated. Are we done with him?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think this is a great example, at least a good example, if not a great example of infill. I think it fits into the neighborhood well. The design is attractive. It's unique. I like that it picks up, Robert may not agree, I don't know, you're the architect, but it picks up in a way that some of the HOA developments don't or can't, more interesting architecture. So, so I like that. The only thing that I wasn't crazy about was, I guess, the color scheme. It seemed a little white and stark compared to the rest of the neighborhood. I don't know if there's a way to soften it or what you would do with color. That was my only kind of aesthetic comment about it. Otherwise, I think it's a really good use of the land.
Commissioner Rotman, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I think it's a really nice project. I had a similar impression about the whiteness of it, and what triggered it was the white gravel, which I do not like. But when I looked at it in context of the building primarily being white, I could sort of see why you did it. I do think you could soften it a little bit somewhere. I think the additional landscaping trees, whatever in the front, would help. But personally, I'm not a big fan of white gravel, so, yeah. But I think it's a nice, a very nice project, and thank you for bringing it forward. So, good luck.
Commissioner Baker.
I think it's a beautiful project. I really have no comments.
Ms. Hernandez.
No comments.
Okay, I think I heard out comments going from a couple people simultaneously, one saying it's too white and the other saying I like it. I fall on the side of it's awfully white for that neighborhood. I like white in the new aloe that we, for which there will be a grand opening on Thursday, but my opinion is that it's a little bit too white and stark in this neighborhood. Nonetheless, I'm, I think it's a great project and a great use of that site. I'm happy to see it, and if somebody has a motion to approve it, I'm.
I move that we adopt the Class III and 32 exemption to SEQA, approve the development permit, and refer to the Architectural Review Committee as conditioned.
Can I add a condition about changing the species of the palm tree? Yes, thank you.
Change the species of the palm tree.
Is that a second? Or is that a friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment.
In the condition, we're just specifically asking the ARC to consider other color options.
Yes, I think we would like to ask ARC to look at the color and look at the height of the landscaping and see if there's something more appropriate on the cottonwood edge of the property.
And with that motion, I'll second.
Can I just confirm the motion for the record? So we have a motion to approve and find that the project is categorically exempt with added conditions to consider alternate species of the palm trees, to consider and to recommend that ARC consider alternate color choices than the white, and to consider lowering the landscaping on the Cottonwood frontage, as well as additional plantings in the front yard.
And gravel.
And the gravel.
You sound like you've done this before. All right, may we have a roll call vote? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Alain.
Yes.
And Vice, Commissioner Rotman.
I'm not Miller. Yes.
Motion carries.
All righty, the motion carries unanimously. That concludes our new business, our items, I take that back, item A of our new business. B and C, I think we can probably handle together. Item B is an acceptance of the resignation of Russ McDonald from the Architectural Review Committee, and item C is an appointment of ARC alternate member Charles Elliott to complete the term of the resigning Architectural Review Committee member. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I saw move.
Second.
May we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Rotman.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Alain.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we have Planning Commission reports, requests, and comments. Mr. Murphy.
I had a question of, of staff or Chris. The Toll Brothers Ascena project, 119 units, two lots of a couple, few weeks ago, there was supposed to be a subcommittee that was set up, and I was assigned to it, but I haven't heard anything yet.
So Edward Robertson, I believe, and Glenn Malacher are managing that project. I will need to check in on them on what the delay is in scheduling that, but it often is just gathering the materials from the applicant and coordinating on their end. So I will check in with them tomorrow and have them reach out with an update to the subcommittee members.
Thank you.
Other commissioners? I have a very, will make a very brief report on the Architectural Review Committee meeting I attended last week on behalf of the commission. One was a consideration of the SunCal Bank on Ramon Road at Santa Rosa. You remember that we added some conditions and sent it on. The project went to the Architectural Review Committee, and they had a difference of opinion than we did on where the front door should be. We were suggesting that it should be on the east side of the front of the building so that it was closer to parking. We were suggesting that it should be on the east side of the front of the building, so that it was closer to parking. The commission, or excuse me, the committee all preferred that it be in the front of the building facing Ramon. Also, there was, we were concerned about the amount of sun coming in the front. And it turns out that there is a prohibition in the zoning core code on an eve extension on a tower of more than 18 inches. So we couldn't get the overhang that we had hoped for. The tower element is now also blue. With that, it was approved 3 to 2. They had another case that did not come to us. It wasn't required to. It was a 4,800-square-foot house at the end of Santa Rosa, which is in the historic tennis club neighborhood. There are some historic ruins there, and I really thought they did a great job handling this project. They asked for redesign. They wanted it to come back. Although the house is allowed by right, they wanted it to be more restudied for concerns about how the home sits on the site and how it relates to both the topography and the ruins and the nearby condominium units. So that they expect to see come back in the future. They were also concerned about how the onsite water retention is handled. And then, in pleasant news, the mini storage building off of Gene Autry, that we had a number of concerns about it, about the monotony in the design. And the planning, excuse me, Architectural Review Committee sent it back to re-study and resubmit. They thought that it should be more reflective of Palm Springs. And they had some very specific suggestions, and they also volunteered to have a subcommittee work with the applicant if the applicant is interested. And then finally, the last one on their agenda was for the first industrial realty warehouse buildings on the north side of the town off of Indian Canyon and 18th, were passed with the conditions that staff had presented and recommended. And that was unanimous. And with that, I'll ask our director if he has a report for us.
I believe I may have mentioned that the Nexus Hotel project, which was the subject of a recent hearing by you all, has been appealed. So it was appealed first by one of the environmental groups that spoke in opposition during the hearing and appealed also by the neighbors to the north. So that will be going to City Council on November 12th for a hearing. We are also working on scheduling another open house related to the zoning code update. We were hoping to do it in November, and that is proving very challenging for a lot of obvious reasons, including the Thanksgiving holiday, but just there's a lot going on in our city in November and December. We're having trouble finding a date. So we're hoping to do it certainly before the end of the year. But we also want to make sure that we're programming at a time that we can get the widest audience possible. So we'll see how that shakes out, because again, it's a very busy time of year, and we don't want to conflict with holidays or other city events. We, with that, that's my update, actually. Yes.
We're often asked about the In-N-Out project at Smoke Tree. I know there's a subcommittee. Can you give us a quick update on that?
Yeah, so there had been subcommittee meetings before. It had come forward to Planning Commission. And I think following the decision by you all, the applicant has been spending some time working on some designs to bring to that subcommittee for further feedback. I think that's taken a little bit longer internally for them, and I think they spoke to how that process works for them. It's a complicated process based on their corporate structure. But I'm hearing that they're very close, and we're actually supposed to speak in the next couple of days to get that subcommittee process going again. So ideally, within the next couple of weeks, we'll get that conversation going again.
And across the street from there, I heard just rumors that there was, you know, there's an older building. I think it was a Coco's restaurant, that that was going to be razed. And Starbucks was planning to build something. Is that? I'm asking you questions that we get asked, and I don't have a.
Yeah, no, it's, I can't confirm the specific tenant. We have been working with a prospective applicant on a project for that that would involve the demolition of the Coco's building and the reconstruction of a new pad and commercial building. It's been a little while since we've talked to them, so I'm not really sure where that is at the moment. There's no formal application.
Thank you.
Seeing no more comments, I see that we stay on adjourned until 5:30 PM on October 28th, provided that we have things for the material for the agenda then.